Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Monday, October 15th, meeting of the Tuckahoe Village Board of Trustees. Will everyone please rise and join me in the place of the plaque?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the village clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Giordano.
President.
Trustee Luise.
Present.
Trustee Andino.
Present.
Trustee Lang.
Present.
Mayor Eklund.
I am pleased to be here tonight, and I'm very pleased to be here tonight because I'm making one appointment tonight, and that is appointing Abel Lardo, Abelardo, I know him as Abe, Batista, to the position of Detective Sergeant effective today, October 15th, 2018. Do I have a motion for this?
Second.
Do I have a second?
I'm sorry. So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Um, I just want to talk a little bit about Abe. In 1994, Abe began his law enforcement career as a police officer with the New York State Park Police. In 2001, he was appointed as police officer in our Tuckahoe Village Police Department. In 2007, he received Officer of the Year Award. In 2008, he was appointed detective. In 2010, he was promoted to Sergeant. And in 2017, he was assigned as commanding officer of the Detective Division. Abe has attended various law enforcement courses and is the recipient of numerous awards and commendations. He's a former member of the Emergency Response Unit and is a certified police instructor. He's joined tonight with his parents, children, and other family members, and I can tell you that the room is packed if you can't see that here tonight. So with that, I'm going to ask for a roll call.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
Very much in favor, and Abe, if you come on up, and I believe you're going to have Abel Tavaras, that's your cousin or godson, cousin and godson? Let me get it right, we're going to grab the microphone, or we're going to look back. And if you would please put your hand on the Bible and repeat after me. I.
I, Abel Lardo Batista.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of Detective Sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And I congratulate you very much for that.
Thank you.
That's a nice shot. That's a beautiful shot. You could say a couple of words of the microphone, eh?
I want to start by thanking Chief Jonathan Stanzo for your support and encouragement and belief in me. Through your example, I have learned the importance of mentorship, leadership, and trust in public service. I want to thank Mayor Steve Eklund and the Village Board of Trustees. Without your support for the Police Department and your commitment to safety and well-being of the residents of Tuckahoe, our job as law enforcement officers becomes much more difficult. Thank you for your support. I also want to thank Tuckahoe Police Department detectives, from investigative to accreditation. I am grateful and appreciate all that you do. Each and every member of the Tuckahoe Police Department also, past and present. I learned a lot from past officers, and I continue to learn each and every day, even from the most junior guy. My journey throughout my law enforcement career has been supported by the love of my family and friends. Thank you all for coming here tonight to celebrate this promotion with me despite of all our busy lives. My parents, who are here today. My mother, my father, who instilled in me the core values of working hard and doing the right by your community. Also in attendance are my children. My eldest son, Alexander, a graduate of Syracuse University, and my youngest, my little man, who looks up to his older brother Alex and also has aspirations to go to Syracuse. He's in for a rude awakening, though, because I can't afford another Syracuse tuition. Bad scholarship kid. And although my middle child, Jonathan, is not here, he is currently a freshman at North Umbria University in the UK. Most of you know my children are my pride and joy, and even though I work long hours, I know that they carry the same values of hard work, perseverance, and humility. My brother and my sister-in-law Claudia, who are like, she's like my sister. My sister Diana, who resides in Florida and could not be here today. You guys are my rock. My brother from another mother, you know who you are, Remy, love you too. My cousin AJ. My cousins are like your best, your first best friends. I grew up with a lot of best friends and a lot of cousins. My family has always journeyed with me through thick and thin, and for all that, I love you. AJ, I wish you the best in your law enforcement career. Be safe. I have served the Village of Tuckahoe for over seventeen years, and during that time I have seen it grow, embrace new residents, but through and through, it has always been a place anchored by a strong sense of community and belonging. I am grateful for this promotion and excited for the future of this great department and the Detective Division. The Village of Tuckahoe is not only my place of employment, but also a place that reminds me that family and community must always be at the core of our lives. Residents of Tuckahoe always take care of each other, and I am humbled to be among this community. Thank you.
Abe, I just want to say two things. You know, you have the support of your entire community and your department, and it's so nice to see so many past police members who've come back actually to congratulate you, and I think that's wonderful. Thank you, gentlemen. I think that's fantastic. And to your mom and dad, you did a wonderful job raising a great, a great son. Any of the board members want to say anything? Tom?
Yes, thanks, Mayor Steve. Just Abe, I would just like to echo the mayor's sentiments and congratulate you on your promotion, and it is a recognition of those seventeen years of service that you've given to our community, and it's great to see you recognized for that. The words that you used to express your time served on the Tuckahoe force were well-thought, well-chosen, and touching to all of us. And it's also touching to see the love that you have and support you have both for and from your family and friends who are here, your nuclear family and your extended family. So all the best to you in your new role. You fully deserve it.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to start to echo my colleagues, but first thing that I wanted to say is it's invigorating and it's refreshing to see such strong family values, especially in this day and age. And again, the mere fact that so many of your former colleagues have been here tonight to show their support only leads us all to believe that this is just going to carry forward in your, your career here in Tuckahoe. So thank you, congratulations once again.
I don't want to say over and over, congratulations, but congratulations. And I also want to thank the chief for looking at talent from within and looking at ways to help people be promoted and to grow and to learn, and I appreciate that. I appreciate the diversity that is offered to the Village of Tuckahoe, so kudos to you, chief. Thank you, and thank you for your service.
I'd just like to say that the Village is very lucky to have somebody like yourself to be able to teach the younger officers coming up those values that you've shown us tonight. Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Chief, did you want to say?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. Again, thank you for your support, for making a great choice in this promotion tonight. Congratulations to Abe and his entire family. I know this is a very proud evening for them, well-deserved and well-earned. One of the things that, you know, Mayor, you asked me for a little background on Abe today so you could prepare your statement, and one of the things that I completely forgot about, I hadn't thought about until last time I interviewed him when he was up for the job, I was a lieutenant at the time. One of the skill sets that he had from the Park Police was that he was an instructor for a snowmobile operator. So I don't know if you want to expand, I went into motorcycles, but you wanted to start a snowmobile unit, we have half, we're halfway there.
Well, I'll tell you what, with the winters we've had, we may need a snowmobile unit.
You know, I was speaking to Abe's mom shortly before this ceremony tonight, and she said to me, when Abe was a small boy in elementary school, he was a school crossing guard, his teachers chose him to look out for the other children in the class, and she said the teacher loved him because he had public service and safety in mind, even as a young boy. And I think, you know, I remember when we interviewed, Chief Mignone and myself interviewed Abe for the position of police officer, he was coming over from the Park Police. We saw something very special in him back in 2001. And one of the things that I know members of my staff know, but public doesn't probably know, maybe many members of the board don't know, is we did something very unique with Abe when he was appointed police officer in 2001, something that we never did before and we haven't done since, because it gave, enabled us an opportunity to do something very different. Abe came over with about six and a half years of police officer experience in law enforcement, and we thought it was a great opportunity to seize that moment, and, you know, after interviewing Abe, we knew that he was capable and had the ability. So he, he never was introduced in public, and he never had a public swearing in, and he was never even introduced to other members of my staff. He went in into an undercover operation from day one. He worked with Westchester County Narcotics Unit, and because of his hard work and because of his expertise, we had seven large-scale narcotics arrests in the Village of Tuckahoe and dozens of arrests across Westchester County in the eight months that he served as an undercover officer. So I think it was only fitting tonight that his progression from being, his investigative skills were all culled and brought forward back in 2001 and through his career in the Village of Tuckahoe, first being appointed detective, and then later on as a sergeant, and then ultimately as a commanding officer of the Detective Division. It was a natural progression for somebody that had incredible investigative skills. And, you know, detective, being a good detective doesn't necessarily make you a good leader, but we are so fortunate in this village to have somebody with his background and experiences as a detective and his leadership, leadership skills, which is quite evident with the number of police officers here supporting him tonight. It really warms my hot heart to see so many retired members here tonight. Some were his bosses, some were his subordinates, some were his peers, but all have a tremendous amount of respect for Abe. We know he's going to do a great job. We congratulated him, and we're all very pleased in his promotion, so thank you.
Well said. Thank you for that perspective, too. Is there anybody else who wanted to speak? If not, we're actually going to just take a break because I'm sure the family doesn't want to sit around for a boring meeting. So Abe, congratulations again, and have a wonderful time tonight. I'm sure they have some special plans for you. Okay, we're back in action here. Moving onto our agenda, we have no presentations or public hearings tonight. It's going to bring us to our adoption of minutes, the approval and minutes of the regular board meeting of September 17th. Do I have a motion for that?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
Very much in favor. That'll bring us to our first opportunity to address the board on any agenda item, and as we have nobody here, we're going to say, other than Anthony, but thank you for coming tonight, Anthony. So that'll bring us to a resolution, and our first resolution tonight is authorizing the closure of Rose Avenue on October 20th, 2018, from nine to five, for a Concordia's Homecoming and Alumni Weekend of 2018. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number two is authorizing the adoption of the Village of Tuckahoe Sexual Harassment Prevention Policy. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And this is a document that was actually provided to us through NICOM, I believe, and the state is asking all municipalities to adopt this, so. And we've gone through it, our attorney's gone through it, we're satisfied.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number three is authorizing the polling location for all election districts, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 32, and 33, to be held at the Tuckahoe Community Center, 71 Columbus Avenue, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on March 19th, 2019. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And resolution number four is approving vouchers in the amount of $364,586.39. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And we have one late resolution added to our agenda, which is resolution number five, approving the closure of Warren Avenue for the annual Halloween parade and party to take place on Wednesday, Halloween, October 31, at 4:30. And at 5:00 p.m., the parade will start at Marbledale Road and Lincoln Avenue to Stewart Avenue to Warren Avenue. They do this every year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And that's going to bring us to our departmental reports to the board, and we're going to start tonight with Frank DiMarco, our superintendent of Public Works, and I think he's going to tell everyone why we are all wearing these very colorful t-shirts.
Well, I was going to save that for last.
Okay, you can, sure.
I'm going to save the most important part.
Of course.
But I just want to touch on my report, just three topics very quickly. I first want to also congratulate the appointment of Abe to the position of Detective Sergeant. Abe's a great guy. He deserves it. All right, I just want to touch on leaf season again. I spoke about that last month, and simply, I ask residents to be cognizant of how they pile their leaves. Not on catch basins, not in front of fire hydrants. Be careful when piling their leaves. Most importantly, don't park, don't park a car that has been running for a while, or even warm up your car over dry leaves. Catalytic converter underneath every car gets hot, it closes, potential to start a fire. So I want everybody to be safe. Most importantly, be cognizant of the fact that children do walk to school in the morning, leave their path clean and free, so they could safely walk on the sidewalks and not on the streets. And that's really it. Any questions? You know, we started leaf pickup today. It's going to go on to probably mid-December. There's no rhyme or reason, there's no schedule. We start in one location of the village, we end up at the very end, we start all over again. So I can never define what day I'm going to be at any particular block, so all I could say is just be cognizant of the fact that the leaf machine will be coming. Most importantly also, people don't realize that the leaf machine can only pick up one side at a time, and then it goes to the end of the block and turns around, so it must sometimes go down in one way. So be cognizant of the fact that there might be a leaf truck there with men working, so I ask that please to try to make it safe for them and whoever's driving on the road. Next, I want to touch on Midland Avenue with the Con Edison Project. That seems like it's been ongoing for about three years, but it really hasn't. It started on Midland Avenue, and it was supposed to end on Midland Avenue, but then they ended up, God bless you, but they ended up going up Winter Hill, across Fulling, and I think to Henry also. So that whole area was encompassed by an upgrade of their main gas lines, which was very much needed. You know, we never want to tell Con Edison that they can't upgrade their gas lines or repair their gas lines. To me, gas is an important fact that it needs to be maintained and upkeeped. But it started on Midland Avenue, and it's almost complete on Winter Hill and the other two roads, which are Henry and Fulling. I felt that the people on Midland Avenue couldn't wait any longer, and I didn't want them to wait any longer, so we paved it right away. Well, people ask me, why haven't we paved, you know, Bronxville paved their roads right away and it took us so long? I like to encompass everything that we need to do that road before Con Edison comes in and paves. So we installed approximately 400 feet of granite curbing into that gateway area coming into Tuckahoe. It was very much needed. Number one, there were three curbs that were, over the years, placed over one another. It was a debacle of a mess, so we wanted to clean that up. And most importantly, it's the gateway into our community, so we wanted to really keep that up and looking pristine. Winter Hill is next, so I'm assuming within the next couple of weeks, we're going to be paving, but most importantly, I need to test our underground infrastructure to make sure that the sewer damage is repaired. There's been a lot of damage that has been caused by the contractor for Con Edison. So we need to go in there and camera the sewer line and make sure that all our repairs are done before we pave the roads, because it's just going to mean tearing up the road again, and that's not what I want to do. And that's, that's basically it. We've had a lot of complaints. I know Dan and I have been talking about this over the weekend, but there's been a lot of complaints about debris, and I'm constantly on top of them, especially when there's blacktop debris, you get the little pellets. When you're walking up and down a hill, it's a potential for a trip hazard or a fall, so I've been trying to keep on top of them, you know, to sweep it and upkeep it as much as I can, and I guess they have to a certain point, but realistically, they haven't. So I just can't wait for them to end their project and get out of here.
Pardon me. I know we've had a lot of neighbors complaining about it, so we're all looking forward to having this thing get wrapped up.
Yeah, same here. And I know Con Edison next year is going to be tearing up the roads that we just paved this year, so that's usually how it works.
But at least we make them pave curb to curb now, so.
True. And I also wanted to mention that, that there's no more patches. Since I've been here 11 years, we've instilled a curb-to-curb policy for any excavation that's done on our roads here in Tuckahoe. Most importantly, last but not least, I want to touch on our pink shirts here tonight. Real men, and now women, do wear pink. So I just want to touch a little bit about the history of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. DPW had started its campaign nine years ago, and we've been wearing these shirts every October since then. But just to touch a little bit on the history that I just found today, that the Esteloid Company began the Breast Cancer Awareness Campaign, formerly known as the Breast Cancer Awareness Campaign, unites and inspires people around the world in the campaign's mission to create a breast cancer-free world. It was founded in 1992 by the late Evelyn Lauder, with the launching of the iconic blue, pink ribbon that everybody had started wearing, and I think it's even on our shirts. But Esteloid best defined its mission with the 2018 Breast Cancer Campaign, and it's titled "The Time to End Breast Cancer." And I just want to wear this, I just want to read this, because it clearly defines the statement of the mission. Breast cancer affects us all, mothers and grandmothers, daughters and sons, sisters, brothers, fathers, friends, and families. With breast, with breast cancer, every second counts. Every 19 seconds, somewhere in the world, a woman is diagnosed, diagnosed with breast cancer. For those facing a breast cancer diagnostic, time takes on a whole new meaning. In life, time is a universal constant. It is finite, precious, and can't be bought. We all wish we had more of it. It's time to take action, time to increase education, it's time to develop treatment and new therapies, it's time to fund the world, leading research to bring us closer to a cure. It's time to unlock more clues about causes and prevention. It's time for patients and survivors to live better, healthier lives, and there's no more time like the present. Our message couldn't be simpler. It's time to end breast cancer. That's all I have.
Well, thank you, Frank. I'm sorry. Thank you, Frank, and thank you for doing this for nine years. I think it's very important. And you said mothers and daughters, and mothers-in-law, too. My mother-in-law, actually, she beat breast cancer about a year or so ago, so it's early detection is, of course, critical, and thank you, but, you know, bringing awareness and hopefully some contributions for a cure for cancer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, did you have anything for us tonight? Okay. Camille, anything? Oh.
Resident parking stickers will be available on November 1st. Resident parking permit required documentation. First and most important, all cars must be ticket-free. Property owners, a valid registration per car with current Tuckahoe address. We will be able to verify your name in the tax roll. If you are a new homeowner, a copy of your deed is required. Non-property owners, renters, resident parking landlord certification, valid registration per car with your current Tuckahoe address, a valid lease, Con Edison bill for current address and your name, and co-op owners must also provide a copy of this year's annually. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary, anything to report tonight? Okay. And as we see an empty chair next to you, David Burke, we're keeping him busy. I know he's at a, he's always at some kind of NICOM or some municipal conference, so, and I think he had to do a lot of driving to get to this one, so we wish him the best. That's going to bring us to miscellaneous business, and that means that our next village board meeting will be on Wednesday, November 7th, at this new time, which is 7 o'clock. This worked out well. That's going to bring us to our Board of Trustees member reports, and as we do every month, we're going to start with yours and my, Deputy Mayor, Mr. Tom Giordano.
Thank you, Steve. Just a couple of brief announcements. The, with respect to zoning and planning, the meetings have been, both been canceled for this month. The following zoning board meeting will be on November 20th, and the, sorry, the planning board meeting will be on November 20th, and the next zoning board meeting will be on November 14th. Just a couple of announcements, a lot going on this weekend, and was able to participate in some of it, but I wanted to recognize yesterday, the, our Main Street Park hosted the first annual three-on-three basketball tournament that was sponsored by the community fund of Bronxville, Eastchester, and Tuckahoe. It was a well, many people came to the event, it was really well-received, some great competition with our eighth-grade teams. There were 12 eighth-grade teams from, boys from the schools located in Bronxville, Eastchester, and Tuckahoe. It was a lot of fun. Chief. fun, uh, Chief Costanzo was there, and, uh, and so was the, uh, representatives from, from, uh, the Police Department, giving out gifts, um, uh, and, uh, we had a DJ, good music playing, um, Ecap was there, and evac were there, giving out food and drinks, um, and Frank's men were there as well to, uh, to help out and, uh, keep, keep the grounds in good shape. The place looked terrific, and it was a, a great event, hopefully the first of many, so thanks to all, uh, special thanks to Amy Corb and David Scalzo, who organized and put it together from the community fund. Also was able to attend at the Broken Bow Brewery, uh, what's become an annual chili con, competition, and we, we now have several municipalities that participate in the fine art of chili-making. Um, I certainly enjoyed all seven bowls of chili that I had when I was there, although that evening, I must say, it was not, uh, perhaps not as enjoyable as it was when I first ate it, but, uh, but, I have to say that Tocco, Tocco again was well-represented, uh, the, uh, the chili was very good, and the winning, uh, bowl was served by the Eastchester Police Department, which was deservedly so, it was really good, and again, a very fun event participated by, uh, by our, our various, um, uh, uh, community, um, community organizations, so, very nice weekend. That's all.
It was very busy, yes, thank you. Uh, trustee Luizy.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and in the same vein, the Tocco Seniors had a, uh, hosted their annual bazaar at the Tocco Community Center this past weekend, and of course, uh, they had a wonderful display of merchandise and baked goods for sale, the meatballs sandwiches were outstanding, I, hats off to Carol. Um, and I wanna backtrack a little, I wanna, um, give some kudos to the Keller Williams Realty, who hosted a masquerade ball fundraiser, which benefited the Tocco Senior citizens as well as evac. Uh, this, this outfit has been a tremendous supporter of the Tocco Seniors, and, um, I just wanted to acknowledge that publicly. Uh, more importantly, as, uh, we get closer to the winter, flu season's coming up, and the New York Presbyterian Lawrence Hospital will be hosting free flu shots, which will be offered at the Tocco Community Center on November first, from nine AM to one PM. Um, so please, anyone that you know, uh, just let them know about this very important date, that's November first, from nine until one PM, at the Tocco Community Center, that's free flu shots. And the Seniors will close out the month with a holiday luncheon on Tuesday, October thirtieth, with Texas, Texas barbecue from the Smokehouse Tail Grate Grill. Lastly, the Tuccos have, all, Tocco Seniors have initiated a new website, and I believe it's going to be incorporated into the village website once the IT people get together. And of course, I'd just like to mention the Tocco History Committee, who continue to work, to meet here and work here every Wednesday, second floor of Village Hall, doing a tremendous job of, uh, archiving the history that is so important here in Tocco. And Chief, I'm gonna mention this Saturday, um, the Tocco Police Department, in conjunction with the PBA, will be unveiling a plaque at the Main Street Park this Saturday at eleven AM commemorating Chief, Tocco Police Chief Henry Norman, who was the first black police chief to ever be appointed in Westchester County, and as a side note, he was also the first black police officer appointed here in Tocco. So that'll be Saturday at eleven AM here at the Main Street Park, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Trustee Andino.
Um, before I talk about the public library's, uh, um, calendar, I just want to call to everyone's attention, the Eastchester-Tocco Harvest Fest, you may have seen the banner up, um, that was, that's being sponsored by the Eastchester-Tocco Chamber of Commerce. Um, we had the Summer Fest, which was a great success, and it was really fun, and everybody got to watch the mayor get dunked, along with some of, some other trustees, um, but there won't be any dunking, but we will have some live music, or they will have some kids' activities, food, uh, fitness classes again, uh, so if you would come out and support, uh, the, the Tocco Harvest Fest, that would be great. The library, as usual, is packed with things to do, and I always wanna remind everyone to go on the, uh, library's website and look up to see if there are some things that might interest you. I'll just, um, highlight a few recurring events, they had the Knit, Crochet and Embroider Group every Wednesday at seven, they now have a memoir writing group, um, writing workshop, um, first Tuesday of every month at one, so you can learn how to write about your memories, if you'd like. Uh, they also offer kid storytimes for babies ages birth to two, um, I sang along and, uh, participated in bilingual storytime with Mrs. Elaine last week, uh, there, on, um, I don't remember which day, last week, but they have storytime for the kids. Um, on October twenty-ninth, they will have a cooking lesson with local resident Mara Percampieri, she's gonna be teaching everyone how to make, uh, Italian, uh, meals with, uh, that with healthy ingredients, so I encourage people to come out to the cooking classes. And also for the kids, they have a Halloween stuffed animal sleepover, so if you have any children who wanna, their, their stuffed animals to have some fun, they can go and sleep over and have fun at the library, and that's on Friday, uh, October twenty-sixth, at four PM. Uh, and then you can pick them up on Saturday, October twenty-sixth, at eleven AM. And they also have the Spooky Book and Treat on Tuesday, October thirtieth, at four o'clock, where they'll have, um, spooky tales and treats. And, and there are a lot of other things going on, too many to say in, in one sitting, so please go on the website and look at, uh, their calendar and, and really support the library, the library supports the community.
Thank you. Trustee Lang.
Yeah, um, first I'd like to reiterate, uh, what Greg said, um, how much I enjoyed those, uh, meatballs at the Senior Bazaar, they were really good for five bucks, too. That was a steal. Uh, must've weighed about two pounds, that sandwich. Um, and you know what was really, uh, amazing? All of the work, um, Anthony and his sister, um, put into, um, all of the, the bags, it was, you know, it, it just, it just showed, um, you know, how much the community merchants care about our seniors, you know? I couldn't believe it. Uh, that was really a nice event, and I really enjoyed it. Um, also, uh, so last month, Tom touched on it last month, Luigi and I, uh, set out to raise some money for the, uh, VFW, it's in pretty bad shape down there, and, um, the first priority they had was their roof, so we were lucky enough to raise about twenty-five-hundred bucks, and then, um, just out of nowhere, I, we, I just have to have a special thanks to the Alberto and Carmen Lugo Foundation, they, um, they gave us, they secured the roof for us, I'd rather not say it was in excess of ten thousand dollars they gave us, and, um, and that roof is on its way, thank you so much to that foundation, you guys are terrific, welcome to the community, thank you. Um, and, uh, and finally, I'd like to, um, acknowledge, um, the folks, uh, that are no longer with us, uh, Fire Chief Artie Reed, um, Mrs. Virginia Sessarini, that would be Dom's mom, Dominic's mom, he's a local business owner in town, and he does so much for our community, so we just wanted to, um, you know, keep our, in our prayers as well. And, uh, finally, a longtime Tocco resident of Grant Street, and my poker buddy, uh, Antonio Solano, he'll be very missed by the community, and, uh, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you very much. Um, so I'll be brief tonight, actually, the only thing I'm gonna talk about is, we were, uh, uh, notified this week by, um, S&amp;P Standard &amp; Poor, that they have upgraded the village's bond rating, which is, uh, wonderful. They, uh, the rating agencies, there's two, there's Moody's, and, uh, and Moody's actually upgraded us last time they, uh, analyzed our books, but S&amp;P has given us a full-point upgrade, we are now up to a double A, up from a double A minus, and, uh, you know, uh, what's important is when you read the report, and I'm actually gonna do a press release on this, and the report will be available on the village's website, you know, they talk about a lot of things that we talk about, which is, um, you know, our strong fund balance, you know, they recognize the fact that we have, uh, we've implemented quite a few, uh, very critical things in the last few years. A village administrator, um, uh, keeping, uh, budget oversight on a daily basis in our, in our village, um, making sure that our departments are in, in line in their budget, and that's critical, so, uh, that's something that we're very, very proud of, and, uh, it's nice to see that these, uh, rating agencies have recognized that. Um, they did make reference to, uh, the fact that we actually have, uh, just about eighty percent of our debt that we have is gonna be repaid within ten years, so that's, uh, pretty much gonna be, uh, wiped out, which is, uh, something that they recognize as a, a positive credit factor. Um, just overall, you know, to go from a fund balance that's at a historic high of over two million dollars is quite, uh, incredible, I, I talk about that a lot, and, uh, people have to realize that that's basically the village, it's the taxpayers' money, it's basically your savings account, and, uh, so that's money that's in our savings account, and the purpose of it is there to cover any, um, extreme expenditures that the village may have, and when you have a fund balance that's too low, uh, you may have some catastrophic event in your community, whether it's some, you know, dramatic sewer collapse, you know, we have an infrastructure that's over a hundred years old, and, uh, you may have, uh, something that is, you know, catastrophic, that you have to actually pay for on a very short-term basis before you go out and maybe borrow for it on a long-term basis, so you have to have some, uh, cash on hand, we'll call it, and, uh, for us to be able to build that, uh, fund balance and keep it at that level is, uh, quite extraordinary, and, uh, I, you know, give credit to, uh, my colleagues on the board, you know, it's very tempting to go ahead and say, well, let's take some of that fund balance and use it to balance the budget, so we can, uh, you know, keep it under two percent. Well, there were some years where we surpassed two percent, 'cause we felt that it was important that we maintain that fund balance, as well as we made sure that we provided adequate funding for our police department, as was mentioned tonight, especially by Abe, uh, that we keep, you know, our police department properly funded, so they can protect us in our community, and also that we give proper, adequate funding to our Department of Public Works, so we can keep our community clean, as Frank talks about every month. So, um, kudos to our, uh, you know, this is a team effort, and I wanna thank everyone on the board, and, as well as, uh, David Burke, uh, he's not here tonight, but, uh, he's a critical element in that. So with that, that's all I have for tonight, that's gonna bring us to the second opportunity to address the board on anything at all. Anybody would like to speak on anything? All right, if not, then, uh, I'm going to actually ask for a motion to go into executive session, we have a personnel, uh, matter that we have to talk about tonight, so, uh, I'm gonna ask for a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Trustee Giordano.
Favor.
Trustee Luizy.
Favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor, okay, thank you, uh, we'll be back, uh, to close up the meeting a little All right, we're, uh, we're back, I'm going to make a motion to come out of executive session, do I have a second for that?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
Favor.
Trustee Luizy.
Favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor, and with there being no other business tonight, I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting, and do I have a second for that?
I second.
This meeting is now adjourned. Till next time, Tocco, have a very good evening.